The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Waburn City Council, held here at the council chambers at 6:00 PM, Monday, April 11th, 2022. Approval of the minutes is the first item on the agenda of the regular council meeting in strategic planning and priorities meeting held March 28, 2022. Do we have the motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make a motion that we accept both the minutes as presented.
Your worship, I'll second that.
Call the question, all in favor? I'd like to just point out, tonight, we have missing here is Council Mickel, Council Corrigan, and Council Jenke. All three are absent, but we still have Quorum, so we are moving forward with it. We have youth mayor Josh Wiens is sitting in here tonight, and you can most certainly raise your hand if you wish a comment to be made on any of the subjects we're talking about. Additions to the agenda? City manager?
Yes, your worship, there's no additions from administration tonight.
Counsel? Seeing none, move forward. Public hearings and notices, there are none, delegation proclamations, there are none. Reports of standing committees, there are none. We have the consent agenda of cash activity report, fire department report, water treatment plant report. And do we have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions? None? Call the question, all in favor? Carry. Motions? Counts payable? Do you have a motion, please?
Let's begin, your worship. I would like to make a motion that the purchases in the amount of $988,171.64 from March the 25th to April 7th of 2022 be passed for payment.
Second?
I'll second that one, your worship.
Questions? None? Call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Tax enforcement, city manager?
Thank you, your worship. We have a report tonight from Abby Gary, our city assessor. So as per section 26.1 of the Tax Enforcement Act, the property listed below has not been redeemed by the title holder. The city may proceed with transferring title. So you've locked description of the lot here, and the taxes owing on that property is $7,825.39. So a little background on this property. This property has been in tax enforcement since June 3rd of 2020. The last payment being made on July of 2018, and the law's been shut off on that property since 2017. Tax enforcement process has been followed. All required letters and notices have been sent with no response from the homeowner. The provincial mediation board has been contacted on September 14th, 2021, in regards to the property, and there was no response from the homeowner. On February 3rd, 2021, the provincial mediation board gave the city of Waburn consent to make file application for title. The 30-day notice was sent out to the property owner on March 3rd with no response received. So request being made by administration is proceed with consent of title. With this recommendation, the city of Waburn will be transferring the land title into the city's name, so that goes through ISC. The city will have a year to sell this property, clear off any outstanding taxes moving forward. Any questions from council?
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion, your worship. The council authorized the city assessor for the city of Waburn to proceed with acquiring title as per section 26.1 of the Tax Enforcement Act for the following property, Lot 15, Block 68, Plan AG4899.
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Airport asphalt repair. Director of Engineering, Wilkinson, if you would, please.
Yes, thank you. So this report is for the 2022 airport asphalt repairs. So the Waburn Airport requires asphalt repairs for three different areas as broken out in the parts below. The 2022 budget has allocated $200,000 for these repairs and line painting at the airport. An application has been submitted to the community airport partnership cap for a 50% funding request for these projects. The application is still being processed. So the three parts are part one, repairs to taxiways B and C. Part two is repairs to the secondary runway, and part three is crack filling on the main runway. So on March 7th, a request for proposal was posted on SaaS tenders in the city websites. Quotations were to be received by March 24th at 2:00 PM. A total of four proposals were received. Proposals submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders understood the scope of work involved, met the RFP requirements, and to ensure the project delivery schedule could be met. Three of the proposals met the full requirements, and the qualifying bids are summarized below, as you can see, so part one, two, and three. For part three, contractors submitted proposals with daily rates plus materials or else based on a per meter of cracks. An inventory of the required work at the airport was done to compare these bids based on the rates supplied. So it is recommended that parts one and two of the 2022 airport asphalt repair RFP be awarded to ASL paving for a total amount of $151,464 plus taxes. And it is recommended that part three of the 2022 airport asphalt repair RFP be awarded to Jenko Asphalt for $5,850 per day and $2.60 per liter for the volume of crack filler used. These costs are before taxes.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the 2022 Waburn Airport asphalt repairs be awarded as recommended by the director of engineering as follows. The bid of ASL paving limited to provide repairs to taxiways B and C and provide repairs to secondary runway in the amount of $151,464 plus taxes, and the bid of Jenko Asphalt Incorporated to provide crack filling on the main runway in the amount of $5,850 per day and $2.60 per liter for the volume of crack filler used plus taxes.
I'll second that, your worship. Questions?
Thanks, your worship. Jen, I'll ask because Council Mickel isn't here, and I think this is what he would ask. On part three, $5,800 a day, that really leaves out of that budget about $49,000 to cover part C, or three, pardon me. Do we feel confident that Jenko is going to be able to wrap up that work inside of that budget, that entire budget of $49,000?
So basically, within the budget, if we receive no cap funding, we would actually reduce part of the scope for the secondary runway, so we can adjust kind of the scope within these to ensure that we meet budget. So that would be the plan, as we will ensure, because part of it is when you get into there, if some of the cracks actually have to go deeper, we would probably cut some of the other scope out to make sure we can meet that $200,000 budget.
But that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you for that, because at $6,000 a day, it wouldn't take much to eat up that.
Yep, exactly, and we understand that.
Okay, thank you for the clarity.
Thank you, worship. Just more of a comment, Jen. Just myself going back five, six years ago, we used to struggle just to get one or two quotes for pavement, so it was nice to see that we've had four quotes. And, you know, I'm sure we're getting better pricing because of that, and I think you had mentioned it's because the engineering department is ahead of things in getting those tenders out there sooner in the year rather than later in the year, so that's, I congratulate you on getting ahead of that to the benefit of the city for pricing and everything.
Thank you.
So the last comment, at $6,000 a day for crack filling on that, is it beneficial to go outside like this, or is it more beneficial to look at some of these crack filling machines that they have that are there and have our city crews do it ourselves?
So obviously, that is something that we are definitely looking at as all avenues to understand fully, you know, what we would need for equipment and what we would need for staff to run that, because that's the biggest thing, is right now we don't have those internal capabilities. But that is something the engineering department is doing on a regular basis, is assessing contractor pricing versus our capabilities internally, and that's something that we have put into our strategic plan, is to kind of assess both sides so we can do what is best for the municipality.
I say that only because up at Suma here, they had one of those machines, and I thought, what would Waburn use that for? But this is one, because we really, on our streets, we really don't do too much crack filling, but it's the airport that is where it's needed, right?
We do it at the airport, and then also that is something that we have been looking at as a city, is how much would it cost to bring contractors like this in to do some of the crack filling, instead of maybe, you know, a lot more of the pothole maintenance, but doing some of that crack filling before we have to go to a full overlay. So we're kind of investigating all options right now.
Going forward, call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Traffic line painting, RFP. Go ahead.
Okay. So this is an annual report, so this is the 2022 line painting roadways in airports. So public works has an allotted department budget for traffic and zone marking of $115,000 for contract provision line painting, and then line painting for the airport is included in that $200,000 for runway refurbishment. RFP has stipulated paint, bead, equipment, and application requirements in two parts. Part one was the traffic marking, centerlines, crosswalks, intersections, and no parking zones, and part two is the airport taxiway and main runway markings. So on March 14th, the 2022 line painting RFP was posted on SaaS tenders in the city website, and was in two parts as stated above. Quotations were to be received by the city of Waburn by March 31st, 2022, at 2:00 PM. A total of five proposals were received, and the results of the proposals are as follows. So as you can see, there's, yeah, the five applicants in a bit of a range there. So after reviewing the bids and comparing them on the considerations referenced in the RFP, it is recommended that parts one and two of the 2022 traffic line painting roadways in airport contractor be awarded to APLS of Red Deer, Alberta, as per the cost detailed and the conditions stipulated in the RFP.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the bid of APLS of Red Deer, Alberta for the 2022 line painting of roadways and airport for the city of Waburn be accepted in the amount of $86,036. The roadways are $72,818, and the Waburn Airport lines are $13,218.
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Jen, I said this to you earlier today, but how many applications of paint does this include, and will the work be done? I know we can't bank on Saskatchewan weather, but will it be done before the oil show?
So this is for one full application, and then it would be, this is award just to do a spring application, and the goal would be to have it done by then, but as we said, it is based on weather and conditions like that. We typically go with a May application. And then outside of this, because if you notice, we do have a little bit of budget room in there, we would target a school zone focused touch-up in the fall before school starts, and that is not included in this award. That would be looking at doing just kind of maybe more local to do that, so.
Perfect, thank you.
The question I have is that we have Line West at 85, 982, and this is APLS is at 86. What is the issue with Line West over APLS?
So APLS did the contract last year. They met our timelines, they met our communication protocols, and basically met all of our requirements with a really high standard. Line West was a company we've used previously, and we had some more difficulties with the timing and the schedule and some issues there with communication, and so we chose APLS based on their experience personally with the city.
Call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Landfill groundwater monitoring well installation.
All right, me again. So this is for the landfill groundwater monitoring well installation. So currently, there are 19 monitoring wells installed around the perimeter of the city of Waburn's landfill that were installed between 2009 and 2010. Semi-annual groundwater sampling and monitoring programs have been conducted at the landfill since 2014 in accordance with the city's permit to operate a waste disposal ground. Most previous groundwater monitoring programs' results suggest data gaps with the current monitoring well network. The data gaps consist of insufficient data in background groundwater quality and the lateral and vertical extents of the chloride and nitrate nitrogen impacts. The Ministry of Environment has made a requirement for the city to complete further investigation to determine whether or not the current impacts are migrating off-site. Consultants were requested to provide a professional assessment to install new monitoring wells at the site to address the ministry's requirements with the current data gaps, including but not limited to background and delineation wells. So the 2022 budget has allocated $75,000 for the landfill monitoring well network expansion. Following this work, the monitoring wells will require surveying and testing, which is included in the budget number. So on March 16th, a landfill monitoring well installation, RFP, was posted on SaaS tenders in the city website. We had to receive proposals by Friday, April 1st at 1:00 PM. A total of four proposals were received, as stated below. All proposals submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders submitted all response requirements, including a detailed methodology, relevant technical experience, a qualified professional, the required insurance, and could meet the project completion date. Although Tetra Tech submitted the lowest bid, their proposal consisted of an alternate work scope which did not immediately address the ministry's requirement for further investigation of the current groundwater data gaps at the site. PMAC or BOTA Engineering proposed 13 new wells to address the current data gaps and included some of the additional surveying and testing work with their proposal. However, excluding the additional work from their pricing, their bid was still the highest. Clifton and Matrix Solutions both have extensive knowledge of the landfill site and the underlying formations from conducting previous environmental investigations at the site. The difference is Matrix is proposing 17 new wells, and Clifton is proposing 14 new wells, both addressing the current data gaps at the site. However, Matrix's proposed well network is preferred. Matrix is proposing more nested well pairs and better background well locations that result with more valuable data results. So Matrix is $2,000 more, but we would get three additional wells in a better pattern, so that's a lot of it, is to make sure, if we're going to do this, we have to make sure that we are going to meet the Ministry of Environment requirements, and Matrix's proposal does all that. So it is recommended that the 2022 landfill groundwater monitoring well installation be awarded to Matrix Solutions per the cost detailed and the conditions stipulated in the RFP.
Do I have a motion?
Sorry, your worship.
I mean?
I have that motion, your worship. I'd like to make the motion that the bid of Matrix Solutions Incorporated to perform the landfill monitoring well installation for the city of Waburn in a amount of $49,502.83 be accepted.
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions? Go ahead.
Just a comment again. I have many people that ask me or comment quite often about when landfill rates go up or when it costs so much money to go out to the landfill, and this is one example of for the citizens of Waburn to understand the cost of running the landfill, that it is very expensive and the revenue is warranted.
Yeah, so a lot of that comes around our permit to operate. So the Ministry of Environment gives us a permit to operate the landfill, and a lot of that comes with the different requirements we have to meet, submitting an operational plan, a lot of this is the testing of the wells, expansion on that. So a lot of that comes down to the environment requirements we have to meet, and those are getting more stringent, and they're getting a lot stricter, and with that, we are, you know, having to do our due diligence to meet that and ensure that we can still operate a landfill and have that permit. So a lot of the reason that the rates keep increasing is so we can meet that, so we can still have a landfill for people to bring all their garbage to.
Thank you, Jen, for explaining that. Anything else?
Call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. The next one is the Albert Douglas Dam review.
Okay, that's me again. All right, so the Albert Douglas Dam safety review. So the Albert Douglas Dam was constructed in the early 1980s by the Prairie Farm Rehabilitation Administration, so the PFRA, to expand the city of Waburn's raw water reservoir, Nickel Lake. Conducting structural inspections is a key aspect in ensuring dam safety and securing the city's water supply system. Dam safety reviews should be completed every five years in accordance with the industry best practices as published by the Canadian Dam Association and the Water Security Agency's regulatory framework for water dams in Saskatchewan. The last dam safety review of Albert Douglas Dam was conducted in 2009, and I would like to note, this is the only one that has been done since the initial inspection acceptance. So we've had one done since the 1980s and when we accepted it. The city currently does not have an emergency response plan or an operating maintenance and surveillance manual for the dam. Currently, the stop logs are unable to isolate the radial gates and their seepage along the seals of the existing radial gates on the chute spillway. Consultants have been requested to conduct a comprehensive dam safety review for the Albert Douglas Dam, a systematic review of available information and data pertaining to the dam and determine the gaps in available information, field review and site inspection of all components of the dam to understand the condition and operational performance of all components of the dam, any field and/or laboratory investigation or modeling analysis that are required as part of the DSR, and a final dam safety review port, including an itemized impriority dam safety deficiency list and recommendations for maintenance or repair. The 2022 budget has allocated $100,000 for the Albert Douglas Dam safety review. On March 14th, the Albert Douglas Dam safety review request for proposal was posted on SaaS tenders in the city website. Proposals were to be received by the city of Waburn as of Thursday, March 31st, at 1:00 PM. A total of six proposals were received, and they are summarized below. All proposals submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders submitted all response requirements and could meet the project completion date. Proposals were evaluated based on cost at 40%, detailed methodology at 30%, and relative experience at 30%. KGS Group rated the highest in the evaluation due to their extensive experience and ability to perform dam safety reviews, inspections, assessments, and rehabilitations. KGS has extensive experience with dams and associated structures originally designed and constructed by the PFRA, particularly on soft foundations. KGS Group's involvement in the design and rehabilitation of these types of structures has led to extensive knowledge of the common issues and concerns that arise as the structural components age. Since the last dam assessment was completed in 2009, the city of Waburn and surrounding areas experienced a 100-year flood in 2011. The city expects various embankment and riprap erosion issues, as well as the design life of various structural and/or instrumental components to be expired. There are various structural and operational components currently not in working order at the Albert Douglas Dam, which have led to multiple safety incidents, including the most recent near miss that occurred this spring of 2022. The known structural issues need to be properly investigated and documented to move forward with rehabilitation, operational and emergency response planning to ensure the safety of our employees, contractors, and the general public, as well as protect the city's water, raw water supply. Due to the complexity of the site, combined with KGS's group's extensive experience and detailed understanding, it is recommended that the 2022 dam safety review be awarded to KGS of Regina, Sask, as per the cost detailed and the conditions stipulated in the RFP.
Motion?
Your worship, I'll make a motion that the bid of KGS of Regina perform the Albert Douglas Dam safety review in the amount of $119,908 plus tax be accepted.
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Jen, again, thank you so much. I know we've been going back and forth all day just because I had a number of questions surrounding this. The recommendation is coming in about $19,000 over what was budgeted, so can you go or tell the public why you've chosen this particular group and how you're going to come up with the overage in your budget?
So one of the main reasons with it is the 2009 inspection lacks very little detail, and being that that is the only one we have, KGS very much identified that they would be looking at it as kind of a starting-from-scratch basis, and they would be doing a full comprehensive review. So that was one of the things, is their ability and methodology, they got the highest score on in the assessment. The other thing is the work experience. So to do a comparison, they had 39 inspections and dam review inspections, and the next closest to them was actually 20. And those weren't actually, they were kind of along all kinds of dams, whereas KGS was very much focused on the PFRA. So they understand them, they have the knowledge on them. So that scored them as a one as well. So in those two things, 60%, that 60%, they were the highest, and they just, they completely understand them, they do have as well, they do have a Waburn office, a local rep that is very experienced in these. So that was the biggest thing, was their dam inspections and understanding this and knowing that it's a very critical infrastructure for us that has a lot of safety issues to begin with, we need to do this right. And then, yeah, within the utilities budget, we will be looking at some other projects and some other maintenance to try and make up that $20,000, because we do understand this is a budgeted overage.
Thank you to yourself and Renee for doing all of the hard work and getting back to me so quickly, just because we are pinching dollars wherever we possibly can, and you guys are doing a really, really great job. Thank you.
Any other question? I want to thank you both, the good reports, and the fact, too, that through all the years, I asked where, how this dam kind of came about, and no one really was able to explain that. It's very interesting. Why did we, was it turned over to us after it was built to the city? Was that what it was?
Yeah.
I'm looking at that.
Yeah. That happened in a lot of situations, and that's, yeah, there was kind of a.
Because I guess that was the thing, it was kind of like this bridge that got turned over to us and then back again. I still don't quite understand why the government gave it to us when it was theirs that they built it, and why we're saddled with it, but.
I don't fully know that side of the history, but it is ours now.
I'm not, I just don't quite understand how these things kind of end up happening, but it is our dam now, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
The Water Security Agency is the one that they contact us on it, so.
Right, because there's, I guess, further down the line, Water Security Agency does a lot of other, takes ownership of a lot of other stuff, but we have to take ownership of this.
Yeah.
So, okay. On that, no, anything? No? Okay, good. All right, with this, all questions have been answered. Okay, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Moving forward, introduction bylaws.
I will take a turn, Jen. So we have an OCP amendment in front of us tonight, and I will note that the bylaw number is wrong. It should say 2022/34, or, yeah, 3442, not 41, we've already used that number, so I will just make that note. So the city council approved the new official community plan and zoning bylaws in October of 2020. Both bylaws were required to receive approval from the Minister of Government Relations, which was received conditionally in December of 2020, and there were a number of amendments that had to be made to meet the conditions of ministerial approval with the deadline of October of 2021. Council approved several of those general amendments in October and were subsequently submitted to the Ministry of Government Relations for approval as required by the Planning and Development Act. A letter was received on December 9th of 2021 notifying the city that the OCP amending bylaw was approved in part except for two policies. Both policies relate to the floodway and excavation and fill within the floodway. The province has advised that the policies are not consistent with the statements of provincial interest and must be amended to comply with the ministry's decision. Public notice, if council proceeds with the first reading of the bylaw at this meeting, then public notice will be sent out in accordance with the city's public notice policy for the public hearing to occur on May 9th at the regular council meeting. So the proposed amendments, policies 3.6.6 and 3.7.8 must be amended to align with the statements of provincial interest, which prohibit development of buildings and additions in the floodway. Their previous proposed wording was excavation and/or fill within the floodway should be discouraged, however, prior to filling lands located within the floodway, there shall be consultation with the Water Security Agency to determine whether it shall be permitted. The new proposed wording would be excavation and/or fill within the floodway shall be prohibited. Staff have reviewed the required conditions of ministerial approval, including, included within the letter from the. within the letter from the minister, and believe that the conditions have been addressed. Upon speaking with the province's community planning branch, the OCP should not contemplate changing the grade of properties within the floodway as it alters the flow of floodwaters. The proposed wording is consistent with the SPIs, which prohibit development in the floodway. Staff are recommending that council proceed with first reading of the bylaw to complete the amendments in order to comply with ministerial approval. If council gives first reading at this meeting, then staff will bring the bylaw forward to the district planning commission meeting on April 22nd for input. Official community plan amendments must be approved by the Minister of Government Relations. So upon final reading, it'll be submitted to the province for ministerial approval and shall take effect upon that approval. So council's options tonight would be option number one, to give first reading of the bylaw, being a bylaw to amend the official community plan, policies 3.6.6 and 3.7.8. And council directs administration to advertise the bylaw as per the public notice policy. Or option number two would be to refuse to give first reading to bylaw tonight and direct administration to revise the proposed bylaws. And the reason for the refusal would have to be provided. Staff recommendation would be that council gives first reading to bylaw 2021 34, 3442 to amend the official community plan as mentioned above.
Do you have a motion, please?
Thanks, your worship. Happy to make a motion that bylaw 2022 3442, being a bylaw to amend the official community plan, bylaw 2020 3442, for the purpose of amending our official community plan, policies 3.6.6 and 3.7.8, be given first reading at this meeting, and further that bylaw 2022 3442 be advertised as per the city of Weyburn public notice policy.
I'll second that, your worship.
Question?
No question, rather simply a comment, Janine, for your attention to this. This is a lot of work, and I can appreciate that. So thank you for that.
Mr. Van Bissie?
Yeah, Jean, I do have a question. So when the government got back to us and said that statement of provincial interest, so that basically says, irregardless of what the city wants to do, they won't allow us to amend the banking or do anything to alleviate flooding in that area?
Yeah, the statements of provincial interest are regulations under the Planning and Development Act that the city is required to be consistent with. And this is one of the specific ones. And there was a bit of a miscommunication on the last letter that we received, so.
Right. Okay. So, yeah, so no matter what we wanted to do, we couldn't do anything anyways. We have to abide by what this, what they're telling us to do.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
First questions? Seeing none? Call a question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. There is no unfinished business. New business, again, if you would please, a home-based business application, 144 Ash Drive.
So an application has been received from Janaya Whitman to operate a personal service business, which would be a nail and lash salon out of their residence at 144 Ash Drive. It's located in the R1 zone. The business will operate Monday to Friday and some weekends. It would be considered a controversial use as this business involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. The applicant anticipates a minimal traffic increase with one client attending the home at a time and parking on the driveway is available. The zoning bylaw requires that controversial home-based businesses, which involve clients attending the home, go through the neighborhood notice process and receive council approval. Neighborhood notices were mailed on March 30th to all neighbors within 50 meters of the applicant's home. Residents receiving the notice were given the opportunity to comment on the application. No concerns or objections were received. So home-based businesses are permitted use, meaning that landowners have the right to undertake the use in accordance with the bylaw unless provisions of the bylaw are specifically contravened. Home-based businesses generally must meet the following provisions: be incidental to the use of the premise as a resident, be compatible with residential uses, be limited in extent in terms of volume of materials sold and number of clients, not substantially increase the volume of traffic, and not detract from the residential character of the zone. The use as identified would be considered controversial occupation under Section 5.19 of the zoning bylaw as clients are directed to the home. Staff have reviewed the application and are of the opinion that the home-based business application meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw, therefore recommending option number one to council. So the decision options, option number one would be that council approves home-based business permit 2022.001, or 006, at 144 Ash Drive, subject to the following conditions: no person other than the resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in the home-based business as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying the address of the dwelling in which the home-based business occurs may be placed in a media. It shall not occupy more than 25% of the gross floor area. The face of any sign on site must not exceed 0.092 square meters and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. The permit is only valid for the above address and is non-transferable to another address. Reapplication will be required if the business moves locations. They're subject to periodic review to ensure compliance. The owner's driveway shall be used for off-street parking, and a city of Weyburn business license shall be obtained prior to operation. Option number two would be the refusal of the home-based business permit, and the refusal reason would have to be provided tonight.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that council approved the home-based business permit 2022.006 to allow for a personal service business at 144 Ash Drive, Lot 15, Block 1, Plan 61R 23978, subject to conditions as provided.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions? Seeing none? Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Rural Water Connection, last one. Oh, Engineering Wilkinson.
Thank you. So the Weyburn Utility Board has requested approval to hook up a new residential water service. The owner has confirmed satisfactory sewer disposal arrangements. It is recommended that the following requests be approved for residential water service for Tyler and Melissa Hillstead, Northwest 34 of 814, west of the second lot J, and the $10,000 connection fee does apply to this application.
Motion?
Your worship, I'd make a motion that the request of the Weyburn Utility Board for access to the rural pipeline be approved, subject to fulfilling the city of Weyburn and Weyburn Utility Board residential hookup requirements for the following: Tyler and Melissa Hillstead, Northwest 34, 814, west of the second lot J.
I'll second that, your worship.
Question? Seeing none? Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Requires an announcement? Anything? Our next council meeting is April, just to make sure.
It'll be 25th.
April 25th. You had mentioned, I think, the 23rd, and I was going, wasn't sure on that one. So April 25th, there's supposed to be this large storm of the century coming in. Whether this is, comes through or not, I just, all I'd like to say is I'd ask your consideration of our city works people, where they'll be doing this stuff. Please do not get excited. We are into April. If it comes through, it'll last day, the snow will melt, and we'll move forward. So let's please be considerate that the streets, just be considerate and relax. It's a storm. Anyway, hopefully they will make it through, and maybe it'll miss us, and who knows? We'll go from there. Anything else?
Thank you, worship. Not to drag the meeting out, but before this storm hits, and if people want to head down to the library and stock up on their books, that would be fantastic. I attended the semi-annual board meeting this past weekend. Just wanted to point out two highlights. 2021 was the highest circulation in 16 years for the Southeast region. So everybody who has a library card, congratulations. If you don't have a library card, or like me, you need to go get a new one, definitely do that. Our library is such an invaluable resource, and it's open to everyone, so please make use of it. Also, the semi-annual book sale for the Weyburn Public Library is the 28th to the 30th, and they will be accepting donations after April the 14th. So if you're going to do some cleaning out this weekend, definitely take your books down there.
I smirked because I'm going, oh, great, another book sale. No, because I go, I usually bring home boxes of books, and then I'm going, it's like I need more books at home. But it's always good to read, so.
Your worship, one of the things I've learned as an adult is that collecting books and reading books are two entirely separate hobbies.
There's, I gotta get into this collection and reading some, too. You, Josh, go make sure you hit the library and get lots of books there. So that's very important. Okay, anything else we need? Seeing none, I'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.